Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walters will be absent this evening. Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilwoman Montano?
Here.
Councilmember Gling?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
The invocation will be skipped tonight. We'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual councilmembers may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask that review of matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council should not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion in legal action. In the back, there are sign-up slips. We limit comment to three minutes. If you didn't do a slip, I'll still recognize you. First on the list is Donald Woolridge.
Honorable council and town staff, I want to thank the opportunity for allowing me to stand before you this evening. I want to openly confess that I'm full of a lot of thoughts, but it's a result of the countless phone calls I've received in my office, at the church where I serve as the pastor, and not only the countless phone calls and the voicemails that's been left, but I've had an opportunity to speak with people in passing, both young and old. And so, as a result of that, I'm driven to stand before you this evening filled with so much stuff. And it's related to how in there is a concern amongst the citizens here in Florence related to perhaps the council being on the verge of falling into a moral decay. And I'm not going to attempt to get into specifics, but that's a concern, and especially where our young people are concerned. There's a concern whether or not there is a, an over, not an over, but a presence of integrity and principles that's guiding the council. And I want to say also that our town, as I've sat and watched over the years and observed, and my heart has become attached to the going's on here, this is a wonderful, and I'm reading something that was written to me. These are not really my thoughts that I'm getting ready to read to you, but this is a writing that was given to me by a specific person. It reads, "Florence is a wonderful and unique community. It's filled with rich historical culture. And we've managed to protect the old and incorporate the new. Also, we're at a crossroads in our town, in our state, and in the country as a whole. And it's very critical," this writer says, "that we embrace and apply good moral character, be men and women of our word, and display honesty and integrity." The writer says, "Our community is watching, and especially our young people, as I mentioned. Young people are looking on and they want to be involved, but they're watching, and some of the questions that was raised to me related to whether or not there is still evidence, and this is an issue that's not been addressed, whether there's a still in place a vein of systemic racism and bigotry plaguing our city, our town. And there's an apprehension that maybe that could very well filter into the thinking of the council." My prayers are that it won't, but anyway, nevertheless, that's the progressiveness of the young minds that's in this town that's concerned. They're asking questions, and as I'm able to look on myself, and I say this not from a personal standpoint, but just in general, and I want to make this clear too, I say this absent from my wife even knowing what I'm getting ready to say. We, the city, the town of Florence, missed the golden opportunity to be on the positive side of history. And I pray that in the future, when opportunities arise, that we do those things that's in the best interest of the town. I mentioned my wife, and I just want to briefly make mention of her credentials, her resume, and not only being a citizen of this town for 30 years, but having been employed by the Cooley Unified School District for 30 years, and the political party that she embraces, which she's really not confined to because she's able to reach across the line. She was just recently inducted into the Hall of Fame. So, you talk about civic matters, social service, she qualifies. And in conjunction with that, I say that as elected leaders, I pray that you all will continue, continue to not have avarice and self-interest in the way of progressive thinking and look to the best interest of this wonderful, wonderful, wonderful town that we live in. We have so much potential, so much promise. If we'll all just link ourselves together in our hearts and allow righteousness and integrity to be the foremost thing that's in the forefront of our minds as we make decisions. And in line with that, I looked on today as I was in service with the Selaya family, and I saw the cross-section of people. That service today speaks to what this community should be about on all levels. I pray for this, I pray for this council, and I pray that you all will be independent thinkers and not allow bigotry and systemic thinking and the old way, the old dogmatic way of thinking, that old boy, good boy school, to infest you and affect you in your thinking and in your decision-making. God bless you, and I love you.
Thank you. Ruth Harrison?
Ruth Harrison, Florence, Arizona. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to shine a light on a situation that needs, I think, needs your attention. The town has contracted for the use of a convict labor crew to accomplish various cleanup chores in the downtown area. This morning, as it has on other mornings, the convict labor crew swept North Main Street and the crosswalks until well past noon. I'm here to request that the town make some changes as to where and when the convict labor is used. The presence of the convict laborers on Main Street makes a lot of people very uncomfortable, especially visitors from out of town. In addition, the presence of the convict laborers on Main Street during business hours is a traffic hazard. I suggest that the convict labor crews pick up litter and remove weeds on the right-of-way at the edge of the downtown area. If you insist that the convict crews be used on Main Street, please require them to complete their work before business is open in the morning. The absence of vehicles and pedestrians would allow the crews to clean the streets and crosswalks with greater efficiency and in less time. I know that I speak for other residents and for business owners too. What is requested here is a small adjustment that will make a big improvement for the town. Thank you.
Any other member of the public right to speak? Hearing none, no close call to the public.
Item six, presentations. Item A, presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce recognizing Crown Point Property Services as Business of the Month.
Mayor, council, Jim Gallo from the Florence Chamber of Commerce. Every month, the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce highlights a business member deserving the special recognition in our community. For the month of December, we are thrilled to announce Crown Point Property Services as a recipient of the Greater Florence Chamber Business of the Month. In honor of the nomination, the honor is nomination-based, determined by several factors, including the community, involvement, and overall success. In addition to providing quality service, the team at Crown Point Property Services consistently gives back to the local community by donating time and sponsoring events. The Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce is incredibly thankful for the strong partnership between the two organizations. Sean Gibson and her team are a pleasure to work with and consistently going above and beyond participating in several community events, such as committees like the Parks and Rec, initiating events such as Nevada Home and Garden Show, and most recently, the Main Street Lights Adopt a Storefront. It is my great pleasure to present this special award to the special member of the Chamber of the Community. Ladies and gentlemen, join me in congratulating the Crown Point Property Service.
Mayor, council, and everybody in the room, I want to thank each and every one of you for this opportunity to receive the Business of the Month Award. I have worked very, very hard in the community to bring jobs to the area, to provide a high-quality service. It's been an absolute pleasure serving on the various boards that I do and being able to interact with everybody in the community. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate this.
You're welcome.
Item D, presentation, discussion, approval, disapproval of an annual audit by the town's independent auditors, Henry and Horn.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you know, we completed our fiscal year-end for last year on June 30th, 2014. As part of what we're required to do, we're required to prepare a year-end financial report and have that report audited by our independent auditors. The year-end financial report shows that the town is in excellent financial health, and it also presents the results for the year. And I would like to invite up Marilyn Mays from Henry and Horn to give you an overview of the audit.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be before you and to do the audit for the town. We did perform the audit for the fiscal year 2014, and you do have the report in front of you. Our report, management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of those financial statements. Our job is to actually provide an opinion on those financial statements, and our opinion is on page one. This year, the town again received an unqualified, unmodified opinion, which means it is a clean opinion. We also, the town received over 500,000 of federal dollars this year, which also required a federal audit. We call it a single audit, and that opinion is also in the CAFR. It is at the end of the CAFR. It is an unmodified, a clean opinion as well. I will answer any questions that you might have. I know that they will be going over the actual financials in just a little bit.
And looking at what your report said, are you happy with what we're doing?
Pardon me?
Are you happy with what we're doing, satisfied with what our town staff is doing?
Yes, yes. If there were any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would be reporting those, and those would be in the report in the back of this CAFR, and there are no findings that we had this year.
Great. That's a good thing on the staff's part. Mike, to you and your staff, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And to Ernie, I guess, Ernie, you got something to ball in it too with your grants. I don't know where he's at, but let's keep all that stuff going. Does any member of the council have any questions to the auditor? The one question I had in there, as I looked through there, and I don't know if I'm reading it right, and I didn't have a chance to give a mic earlier, but I saw in there one portion and marked it, and I can't find it now, of course. It showed that we have $8 million in economic development money.
And let me see if I can find that. Mike may have to address that.
Mayor, oh, wow, that's pretty loud, sorry.
Didn't mean to upset you.
Eight, you said you saw $8 million of economic development money? I'm not sure where that would be in the CAFR. I don't recall such a number in economic development.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out, because I know that we've struggled to find that, and I just was kind of curious.
We do have a fund where money was set aside from the general fund into a capital projects, economic development fund. In that fund, there's about $440,000.
Twenty-seven, Bill?
Well, of the finance report, not the audit, it was the next one. Page twenty-seven. Middle of the page.
Oh, man.
It's got the blue on top.
There's another on page 76. It also shows a fund balance of $871,000, which includes the...
I know, I saw something else in there. That's why I was questioning, yeah.
That $871,000 includes the special improvement, the streetlight improvement districts added together.
Well, I can't find it right now. We're not going to hold up the meeting, waiting for me to find this one spot. I'll get with you after, when I find it again. Does any member of the council have any questions to the auditor? Okay, we thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, the staff requests a acceptance of the town's comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to accept the town's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014.
A second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the town's, or accept the town's comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item C, presentation of the quarterly fiscal report as of June 30th, 2014, year-end, and a quarterly financial report as of September 30th, 2014. This is for information only.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we'd like to present the fourth quarter financial report. This is a report that comes from the information that also goes into the comprehensive annual financial report that was audited. The numbers in this report are not audited, but it shows the year-end financial report on a comparison basis from, to the budget. So, I just wanted to provide this report with a little more detail than having to go through the comprehensive annual financial report. And this report is presented in the same format that the other quarterly reports that you have seen in the past, this past year, where I discuss the revenues of the town and the expenditures of the town and fund balances. So, highlighting the report, you also have the printed report, which is several pages long, and this presentation tonight summarizes what you would find in the printed report. That's in your packet, and that will also be posted on the town's website. But as of year-end, all revenues met or exceeded expectations. Expenditures finished the year within budget, resulting in budget savings, and fund balances ended normal and with healthy fund balances. Total sales tax, we projected at the beginning of the year, $3,670,000. Sales taxes came in at actually $4,588,000, which exceeded budget projections by $388,000. Now, the sales tax consists of general sales tax, private construction, government construction, and food tax. And you can see that of the total amount where we exceeded our revenue projections, $131,000 was related to the general sales tax, and another $280,000 was from private construction. You see government construction or sales tax received from government construction projects was less than what was budgeted, and food tax came in above the projected amount by $21,000. Another major revenue was state shared sales tax. You see our projection, $2.2 million, and we exceeded that by $16 million. State shared income tax, basically, that's a number that is already known before the budget is prepared and provided to us by the league, and that number came in at expectations or 9% ahead of the previous year. The vehicle license tax was almost $70,000 above budget expectations. And in the general fund, the total of all revenues in the general fund, we exceeded the budget expectations by $676,000. On the expenditure side, as I said, all funds, the expenditures were within budget, and you can see that we were, 93% of the total budget was expended, also resulting in budget savings of $902,000. In the highway user fund, the revenues exceeded the budget by $131,000. And here's a breakdown of the highway user revenue in detail. Highway user revenue came in right about at expectations, about $9,000 less. The transportation excise tax exceeded budget expectations by about $67,000. And on the expenditure side, 27% of the budget was expended, and the reason that is very low is because the majority of the budget is capital outlay, where only 4% of the capital budget was expended. When we went through the budget process, we carried forward most of those funds, our $2.3 million into this fiscal year and are currently completing those projects, excluding the capital outlay. All of the other expenditures within that fund were at 81%, which is still within budget for those particular line items. Capital improvement fund, again, exceeded budget expectation on the revenue side by about $276,000. Private construction tax, which is the largest component of that fund revenue, we exceeded budget expectations by $280,000. Total expenditures, a lot of it was carried forward. We expended about half of the budget, and we carried forward $2.6 million to complete projects in this fiscal year. And the ones I have listed here are the ones where there was actual activity and completion, or I highlighted a lot of the capital projects. The report has all of the capital projects that were budgeted, and for this presentation, I just highlighted the major ones. The utility funds, we nearly met budget expectations in the water revenue and expenditures. We were within budget. And again, the same thing as the Herf, the highway user fund, where the majority of the expenditures budgeted are capital outlay, and excluding capital outlay, we were 79% of the budgeted expenditures. Almost 3.5, 3.4 million was carried forward into the current fiscal year. Same story with the wastewater utility funds, exceeded revenue expectations, carried forward capital project budget, and we were 90% of the non-capital of budget expended. And sanitation, same thing. 94% of the budget was expended. Your report that was printed out, I think, is about 18, 20 pages, contains a lot more detail, a little analysis and tables that you saw in this presentation. So, with that, if there's any questions on this fourth quarter year-end financial report.
Any members of council have anything? Mike?
Yes, Mike, on the Herf capital outlay expenditures, you know, I was looking at the different items we have for improvement. One of the areas that I was looking for in this area, and I didn't see it listed, was on the curve between Adamsville Road going out toward the Safeway.
I would like either Charles or...
Mayor, council, wow, these are really loud today. Mayor, council, councilmember Montano. Mr. John Mitchell, he's now interim public works director. We have been talking about this for a while, and I'd love him to just touch base on this topic for a moment.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Yes, I was made aware of that gap that exists out on Hunt Highway, and that's one of the projects that I'm going to raise to the top of my list and get that done. I understand that the town had an opportunity to partner with the county when they made the improvements along the sweep of the curve, and I have not got a really good reason why we did not participate. That was the time to get it done. So, in talking with staff and the streets department, we'll probably have to come in and mail out the existing pavement, put in some new A B and three inches or so of A C over the top of it, but I guarantee we'll match what's out there. We'll take care of that project.
You know, that project has been sitting there for three, four years. Also, the area just south of Hunt Highway on Ataway Road, where it has a temporary, there's a dip right there, a ditch with barricades. We have it marked with temporary signs. It's been there three years. Are we going to leave it like that permanent, like the curve? Or are we going to properly mark it with caution lights so that people are aware of that as well?
As a matter of fact, we do have a consultant who is looking at that project, and I hope on the 5th of January to bring forward a professional services agreement with that consultant so that we can codify the work he's doing and have him complete that. Yes, there are safety concerns on that intersection. He will evaluate and make recommendations. I want to get him under contract. That whole curve, the signal lights at the fire station, the repair of the asphalt at the curve in Hunt Ataway are all high on my list to get done in the near term.
John?
Yeah, I have a question on, I guess it's on page 26. It talks about interest and fiscal charges, $870,000. What is that interest for? I mean, I know we have some obligations, but...
I'm sorry, John. I'm councilmember Anderson. On page 26 of the quarterly financial report...
Statement of revenues and expenditures, changes in fund balances.
Are you referring to the CAFR, the larger document and not the quarterly financial report that I'm going over?
Right, it's... Twenty-six is what it says on the bottom line.
Oh, you're on a different, back on the audit. I think you're on the audit. Are you on the audit?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, that's the audit.
Is that the audit?
Yeah. Yeah, that's under the audit. You're right. Yeah, that's under the audit, you're right.
Okay.
Okay, on page twenty-six, what was the line item again?
The interest in fiscal, the interest in fiscal charges, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars for the community facility district debt service.
Oh, that's the interest that, and, and it's more, it's primarily the interest on the debt service in the CFDs.
Okay, okay.
Do you have any members of council have any question? I'd like to go back to John on the Ruben end of the Herf money. We haven't stopped the Willow Street and Central Street improvement project, have we? Where sidewalk curbs are gutter and repaving?
Mayor, council, no, we have not. Matter of fact, that bid has already been completed, and Mr. Mitchell's brought it to me, and John, can you remind me where we're at with that project, please?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the award has been made to the contractor, and I believe this week I have a pre-construction meeting. So the, I know it's for the concrete improvements, the sidewalk curb and gutter. I believe there's other work that has to be done on the actual roadways, asphalt, those sorts of things. I'm not sure that this contractor will do that specific area of work, but the concrete work has been awarded and we'll be moving on that.
Willow and Central in that portion of town are a drag strip when the high school lets out at lunch. Need to be speed bump to put in both roads, not just on Willow. Needs to be something done over there.
I will look into that, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions of the Mike report? Looks like we've come in pretty close, huh, Mike?
Excuse me?
Looks like we've come in pretty close on everything, on the, your anticipated for this year's revenue.
For the 2015 first quarter report? Well, I have another, I have a follow-up presentation on that, and I'll just get started if there are no other questions on the fourth quarter year-end report.
Okay, good. Okay, any other question? Okay, thank you very much.
On the, so on the first quarter 2015 report, a lot of our, some of our revenues are a little short of the monthly projections, projected amounts. For example, total sales tax is lower than the budget expectations by ninety-five thousand dollars through the first three months. Again, it's, the sales tax is made up of the general sales tax, private construction tax, government construction and food, and the majority of the, being lower than the budget expectations is general and private construction. Private construction is the permits, and that's primarily in Anthem. So we're lower on private construction, we'll keep an eye on that. And in the general, it's my belief that the general is lower than projections because there are a few businesses that have not remitted sales tax for, for this current fiscal year. So we've identified those vendors or retailers, and we're talking to them about getting them caught up on their sales tax that's due to the town.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just move forward. State shared sales tax, it's about eleven thousand lower than budget expectations through the first quarter, and I'd like to also add that it is the first quarter report, and it's really hard to make a judgment as to where we're at, you know, how we'll end up for the fiscal year, like a few more months to go by before I start projecting what the year-end may end, end up based on this trend, because we, we still have to investigate the numbers, like, like for example, the general sales tax, let's say it was because there's some major vendors that have not paid sales tax. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on these and certainly be reporting it to council. State shared income tax, again, that's a number that's already determined, and we'll come right in at budget on the state shared income tax. Vehicle license tax, that is basically meeting expectations. In the general fund, we are exceeding expectations, so all those sales taxes down, the general fund is exceeding expectations, considering all of the other revenues by about ninety-two thousand dollars. But again, the same thing goes for if we're ahead, it's, it's first quarter, so it would really look at those numbers later on and see where we're at after more months go by. Expenditures, we're within budget in the general fund, twenty percent expended quarter of the way through the year. Highway user fund, we're at twenty-three percent of the budgets collected. And this is more detail on the actual highway user revenue, the highway user revenue is about sixteen thousand ahead of projections, and the transportation excise tax is about twenty-one thousand lower than budget expectations through the first three months. On the expenditure side, four percent of the budget is expended, zero percent is capital outlay, has been spent and at twenty percent of the expend, budget for non-capital. Capital improvement fund, we're proceeding on capital projects on the revenue side, where twenty-one percent of the budget is collected, and here's a detail of the projects that have currently started. Again, the report that is in your packet contains more detail as to all of the line items that were budgeted in this fund. Utility funds, again, the report will show you the revenue that's been collected and the expenditures, again, within budget. Same for wastewater and sanitation. So in a nutshell, revenues, wish they were a little bit better through the first three months, but you know, it's still too early to tell where we're at on that, and on the expenditure side, we're all within budget and capital projects are moving forward. That, I'll take any questions.
John?
Since I'm the new guy here, I'll ask, what's your basis for doing the monthly budget? I mean, how do you come up with that?
For doing-
You know, the monthly budget amounts. Is that based on history or?
Yes, yes, what I do is I do a trend, and now I have a, an analysis or a trend of three years' worth, and you know, I kind of get an idea by month how much revenue would be coming in in that particular month based on the past three years, and then extrapolate that into the current year and then compare that to actuals.
Well, you'd be complimented how close you are, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? Okay. You're off the hot seat.
Okay, thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn? Special meeting for the town Florence, Florence Town Council?
Make a motion to adjourn to a special meeting of the Florence Town Council.
Second. We have a motion and second to adjourn to a special meeting of Florence Town Council on a paper signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item A, second public hearing on resolution number one four eight six dash fourteen, and discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town council of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, proposing a one-time specific amount in excess of state imposed expenditure limitation and setting a special election for May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen. First public hearing and reading of the resolution was held on December first, two thousand and fourteen. Mayor, member of council, this is your second public hearing, and actually the third time that council is seeing this item. If you have any questions or would like staff to explain anything, myself or Mike would be happy to do that. When you call for the motion, we do require a roll call vote. When we're done with the meeting, we will be doing a publication that's required by law, and it will be listed in the paper of how many people voted in favor and against the resolution.
Do any members of the council have any questions, Lisa?
No.
Sheen, I need a motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution number fourteen eighty-six dash fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt resolution fourteen eighty-six dash fourteen. Any other discussion?
Mayor, before you open that public hear, before you do that, we do need-
We need to have a public hearing, that's right.
Yes, sir.
Correct me. Well, hold your motion until we have the public hearing. This time I open the public hearing. Channel movement, I'll close the public hearing. Now.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number fourteen eighty-six dash-
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution fourteen eighty-six dash fourteen. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a question, roll call, please.
Councilmember Galen?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Montano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Mayor Rankin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn from a special meeting of the Florence Town Council?
Taken. We have a motion and a second to adjourn from a special meeting of the Florence Town Council. Any other discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a question, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item nine, consent. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a member of council or a member of the public ejects at the time the item is called. Item A, approval of the utility easement between the town of Florence, Arizona, and Arizona Public Service Company for the Territory Square Project. Item B, authorization to enter into a professional service agreement with Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce for calendar year two thousand and fifteen. Item C, approval of the signing, approval of signing a contract with Apache Underground and Excavation for the Bailey Street Water Line. Item D, recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on the Florence Garden Mobile Home Association's application for special event liquor license for social hours on January eighth, January twenty-second, February fifth, February nineteenth, March fifth, March nineteenth, November twelfth, and December tenth, two thousand and fifteen. Item E, approval of the December first and December eighth town council minutes. Mayor, member of council, that is your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Any member of the public have anything they'd like to take off the consent agenda? Hearing now, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as written. Any other info? Hearing now, no other discussion, call for the question, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Item ten, new business. Item A, discussion approval, disapproval of authorizing staff to issue a request for proposals to the shortlist design build firms for the proposed fitness and recreation center and establishing a maximum project budget of six million seven hundred and fifty thousand. Mr. Hughes will take this.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Back in July at a work study to discuss the library recreation complex that's currently under construction, the town council directed staff to do a little bit of research on a fitness center to be included to that project. Due to procurement laws, we needed to look at that separately from the existing project, and then on September fifteenth, the town council further directed staff to issue a request for qualifications to secure a design build firm for a fitness and recreation center. On October twenty-third, we, that deadline passed for the request for qualifications, and we received twelve statements of qualifications from design build firms. The selection committee scored all those statements of qualifications and shortlisted it to the top five, which are listed in your packet. From those requests for, or statements of qualifications, we were also able to help determine a little bit better what we might need from that, for that particular facility, knowing what we have in the existing library recreation complex that's currently under construction, and then what we would still desire in a fitness facility. So we were able to determine that approximately a thirty thousand square foot building would be necessary with some room for future expansion if needed. And we were also able to narrow that down. If you remember, when we issued the, brought back the, the request to, to the town council in September, that we had a range of about a hundred and eighty to three hundred dollars per square foot. After reviewing these statements of qualifications, and again, kind of seeing where we, what we needed as far as square footage, we estimated that we'd probably be okay with around two hundred and twenty-five dollars per square foot, which would put a total construction cost at about six point seven five million. So with that, we've done enough of the research, and we've got back the statements of qualifications and shortlisted. We're here tonight to ask for further direction from the town council on this project. However, at this time, staff would recommend that we do not move forward with this project due to the many other things that we have going on at this time. But we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you remember the staff, council have any questions? I do agree with the holding off on, the chair would recommend a motion to suspend the project and definitely, and take a look at it at a later date. After the, after the costs came in and everything and where we're at, not knowing where we will be in the next fiscal year, let's take a look at it, that's-
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to suspend the project indefinitely. Do the budgetary-
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the project indefinitely. Any other comment? Hearing now, I'll call for a question, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is where I get to talk, and we're going to be announcing the appointments made to the following commit, committees for the council liaison. In the Anthem area, Vice Mayor Walter will be our liaison out there. Arts, Arts and Culture, Councilmember Hawkins, who I now understand you have a degree in art, is that correct, Bill?
I don't have a degree, but that's what I majored in.
Okay, that's close enough. The Budget Committee would be Becky, Galen, and John Anderson, two newcomers to the council. I think that John's going to get his eyes open, and Becky will be their expertise from the past, which we hope will help. On the Central Arizona Association of Governments will be myself and Vice Mayor Walter. Emergency operators, operations center, Councilmember Montano. Florence Greater Chamber of Commerce, be myself and Vice Mayor Walter. Florence School of History, again, Councilmember Montano. Four Parks Area, which includes Florence Garden, Caliente, and Casita Hermosa, will be myself and Vice Mayor Walter. Your Historical Advisory Commission will be Councilmember Galen. Your Industrial Development Authority will be Councilmember Anderson. Your League of Cities in Town will be Mayor Rankin and Councilmember Woolridge. The Library Advisory Board will be Councilmember Woolridge. The MAG will be myself and Vice Mayor Walter. The Native, American Community Trites, the Tohodah Autumn Village, and the Hila River Indian Community, Councilmember Woolridge. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will be Vice Mayor Walter. Now Partnership will be myself and Vice Mayor Walter. Planning Zoning Commission will be Councilmember Hawkins. Public Safety Retirement Board, with her expertise and dollars and number, will be Councilmember Galen. Now, if any council member has any problem, we've also listed on there the months or the days of the meetings that are listed that you should attend. If you cannot attend, please contact Lisa so she can get ahold of me, and we see who else we can get to attend in your place. You also, in your packet tonight, you received the, a lot of information on who's on our boards and commissions at this time, also the general provisions of the town organization. Keep these, they may come in handy to you later down the road. That's all the appointments. Going to the manager report. You got anything you want to say tonight, shortly?
Yes, sir, Mayor, council, the report is in your packet. However, I would like to introduce Mr. Cliff Matisse. He's with Dixon Wright, and he is our town attorney, and I would like to welcome him tonight.
Welcome, Cliff. Is that all you have to report on?
Yes, sir. The rest of the report is in your packet.
I am glad to see it short. Second call to the public. Anybody in the public have any comment?
I wanted to do this Monday, but you guys stayed away too long, so I left. I wanted to thank the Parkland Recs Department for a wonderful Christmas parade. I know Allison and all her staff really worked hard to get all that was there that got done. The kids loved the snow. We were setting in front of the hotel where we were snowed on, and the little ones just had a blast trying to catch it with their tongue. We've never come down for one before, we've gone to other communities that have them, and we just thought this year, we want to keep supporting the town, so we came down for this one, and we really had a good time. I have a question- I have a question, completely off the subject. In your appointments, what's an Anthean area liaison going to do? And if you've got one for them, why not Florence and why not Florence Gardens? Are we not as important as that other community out there? Thank you.
There is one.
Well, I think that's the mayor and the vice mayor, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, no, the, the mayor and the vice, or no, let's see. Yeah, the mayor and the vice mayor.
Bill? We can't, we'll get that after the call. We can't answer that. We're... Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You, Bill? You need to just call the public or call the council. Any member, any other member of the, hearing none, I'll call, close the public, call the council. Becky?
Yes, I'd just like to wish everyone happy holidays.
Well, short. John?
Yes, I want to thank the town for sending me up, well, actually, three of us went up to the training for the, at the Legal Cities and Towns training up in Mesa this last week. And if anybody hasn't been to that, it's on staff. It's a, it's a very worthwhile thing and we found out all the things we were doing wrong. But it was, it was worthwhile. We got to interface with a lot of other things and there was one of the speakers who, who sort of made an emotional speech to us, which I thought was emotional because he, he talked about that the previous night or previous morning, our Congress waited till three-thirty in the morning to do the final approval of the budget to keep from shutting the government down again. And he says, you know, there's ninety-three towns and cities in Arizona and you people represent them. He says, you keep the commode flushing. He says, you know, you keep the policemen out there, you keep the fire department running. Says, there's never any question about you shutting the government down. He said, think about who the government is. He said, you know, you folks here are more our government than anyone else. And so, you know, I thank all the people here who, who come to our meetings and participate in the council and it sure made me proud to be a council member here in the town of Florence. Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and a safe one.
Ruben?
Yes, this is the last week if you're looking at giving a tax donation to the school district. So if you'd like to, to make your donation and contribution, it helps our students the best we can. If so, if the opportunity for you is there to donate, that allows you to get, return the money through your state income tax this coming year. Also, as we had talked earlier in the last week, that former Town Council member, his father, Tom Salia Senior passed away and today was a funeral. And we currently have two lifelong residents, Vita Ariola and John Avanente, who are in the hospital, you know, and they're, your prayers are, are welcome, so thank you.
I was going to say that as well, Ruben, to send your thoughts and prayers to the Salia family and to anybody that's sick or bereaved in our community. And I'd like to wish our town staff a very merry Christmas and a happy and blessed new year and to our entire community a very merry Christmas and a happy new year. And thank our staff for all the work that they do for the town of Florence. You work for the community, you don't work for us and I appreciate all that you do.
Well, last meeting in the year of two thousand and fourteen. What a year it's been. I think it's been a good year. Controversy, yes. Progression for the betterment of Florence, I think is the top of the list. We've actually taken and gone a few places farther than we have in the past and we will continue to do so. Remember the, the saying, it's more blessed to give than to receive. This is a time also not only to the school system, but to your organizations that are helping the needy for, at the time of the holiday spirit. Many people aren't as blessed as what some of us have and we need to take that into consideration as we go to our churches, go to our civic organizations. Let's don't forget those are a little bit less unfortunate than us and let's make sure that they have a happy holiday season. And we'll go into two thousand and fifteen, let's go in with eyes wide open. Let's project Florence to become a better community, all working together. Let's respect the people that you've elected. You don't have to respect the people, but you have to respect the position they're Don't divide us. Don't try to divide us. We're not going to be divided. We are a council of seven people up here that are working for you, our citizens, for the betterment of this community. Again, you don't have to like me. I wished everybody did, but I know that that's going to be impossible. But please respect the position I'm in. Respect each one of these council members, the position they're in. Let's think positive. Let's don't be thinking backwards. Let's think of the future of Florence. Let's think of building a better community than what we have today. With your prayers, with the prayers of many people in the community, this council will do good things in two thousand and fifteen. Keep in, as Valerie brought up, keep in mind all of those are, they're sickness. None of us want to be sick. None of us want to lose a close friend or relative, but it happens. That's what, that's life. But for those family members that are remaining, your good thoughts and your good wishes will mean a budge to them. With that again, citizens of Florence, town staff, my family, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we're going to get it done. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned.